Absence for Mayor Jernigan.
I will make a motion to excuse the mayor. And oh, she's here in town. I don't know why she's not here.
Both of you are excuse them.
Well, I'll give her an excuse. Did you give her excuse absence till she gets here?
He's still in.
Yeah, she was here.
Well, we can wait until six.
Okay, yeah.
So Jan, for certain is.
Okay, yeah, okay. Well, motion to excuse the mayor.
I'll second it.
Call for a vote.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
McCorcall.
Yes.
Yes.
Belt.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
I didn't say it here.
All right, we're gonna recess to the city council meeting and be in a joint council and PUA meeting. We recess to executive session. Oh, public.
Yes.
If there's any public comments pertaining to the executive session items, a three-minute time limit per person has been established. Being none, we will recess to executive session. A is NPUA slash council conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to government code section five, four, nine, five, six point nine, D one, one case Rio Buena Vista Association et al versus City of Needles, case number C I B S B two, oh, two, eight, four, three, nine. And B council conference with legal counsel regarding potential initiation of litigation pursuant to government code section five, four, nine, five, six point nine, D four on one potential matter. Back from executive session and we will have a report from the city attorney.
The council met in closed session. Item A was a meeting of the NPUA and council. And it was conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to government code section five, four, nine, five, six point nine, D one, one case Rio Buena Vista Association et al versus City of Needles, case number C I V S B two, zero, two, eight, four, three, nine. There was no reportable action taken. Item B was council conference with legal counsel regarding potential initiation of litigation pursuant to government code section five, four, nine, five, six point nine, D four, one potential matter, and there was no reportable action taken, and that concludes the report out.
Thank you. We're gonna adjourn the joint meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. Roll call has previously been take. Oh, do we? Call for roll call again.
Councilmember Campbell here, McCorcall here, Merritt.
Here.
So.
Here.
Belt here.
Longbridge.
Here.
All right, and we're gonna stand for the pledge of allegiance led by council member McCorcall.
Ready to begin?
My allegiance to the body of God, in his grace, let me remember that we are the promised to his hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with which every justice is promised. And I'm gonna lead us in the invocation. Dear, dear God, our Father, thank you for this time that we can all get together to discuss city business. I pray that you be with all of my fellow council members and city staff and every citizen in our city, Lord. Thank you that we have this chance to come together and make Needles even better. In your precious name, we pray amen. Approval of the agenda?
I move to approve.
A second? We have a second from councilmember Campbell. Call for the vote?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
McCorcall?
Yes.
Bone?
Yes.
Belt?
Yeah.
Longbridge.
Yes.
Any conflicts of interest on anything this evening?
Oh, wait, I have one. It's item number five on the consent calendar.
Okay.
I have to conflict on that one, but because I live on Disney.
All right.
And so on that one, because councilmember Campbell's declared a conflict, you can still vote on the consent calendar, but you were accusing yourself as to that item number, and it's, uh. Yeah.
You can't vote on telephone calls.
Wonderful. Any correspondence?
No.
Introductions, we see former vice mayor Doc Paget and Sean Goodmanson, Tim Terrell. All right, welcome. Welcome everyone else too. All right, city attorneys for the parliamentary procedures.
Yes, according to the rules of procedure adopted by the council, the mayor or presiding officer is responsible for the maintenance of order and decorum at all times. No person should be allowed to speak who has not first been recognized by the chair. All questions and remarks should be addressed to the chair. A council member once recognized shall not be interrupted while speaking unless called to order by the presiding officer. No member should be allowed to speak more than once upon any one subject until every other member choosing to speak thereon shall have spoken. Public members attending council meetings shall observe the same rules of order and decorum applicable to the council. Sounds like I need a new microphone.
Thank you. As a courtesy to those who in attendance, we would ask that cellphones be turned off or set in their silent mode. Thank you. So, public appearance, persons wishing to address the city council on subjects other than those scheduled are requested to do so at this time. When called by the mayor, please announce your name and address for the record. In order to conduct a timely meeting, a three-minute time limit per person has been established by municipal code section two dash one eight. Amendments to the California Government Code section five, four, nine, five, zero prohibits the city council from taking action on a specific item until it appears on the agenda. Come on up, Mr. Jones.
Good evening, Pastor Jim Jones, one, seven, zero, Balboa Place. Good evening. And it's wonderful to see you. First of all, I'd like to express condolences for Mrs. Jernigan and her family. But, and second of all, I'm great remorse that Rick isn't here tonight, because I hate throwing him under the bus without him being here, but so roll the bus. So, I brought to the attention of the city's administration and staff that I have a electric light, a streetlight out in front of eight oh four Bush Street, and it's been out for almost six months. It's been brought to the attention of the administration and the, and the utilities, and it's still out. Also brought to the attention that the intersection at the corner of Vine Street and R is a total uncontrolled intersection. And my wife and myself have almost been in an accident there because of, of lack of control and people without the stop signs, without, without a visual guide to stop, they don't. So, and those were brought to the attention, both the administration and to the, the powers that be in late November, early December. And then various other sundry items that in, in that neighborhood that I'd like to see addressed. I know we're a little backstreet in the, on the north side of Needles, but we are an important street. We have a lot of activity over there now and a lot of children there now, and these things are becoming more and more important. Also, in that neighborhood, both that street, which is Bush Street, and on the other end of it, which is Balboa Place, which is my neighborhood, those two do not connect, but there's a lot of traffic that go through between those two streets. And, and it's been a law enforcement issue about trespassing. And I've gotten law enforcement involved with that, but it sure would help to have no throughput signs and dead end signs on both those streets. And unfortunately, those were requested about five years ago, when the cannabis industry came to Balboa Place, and that is, those actions have never been taken. So, I'm bringing these concerns up, and I talked to, I, I talked to Rick about, with these things, and, and I made a phone call to Rick, and I'll give him the benefit of the doubt. I didn't know he was sick, so I won't quite put all four wheels over and just the front two. But these things that need to be addressed before someone in my family or someone in someone else's family gets hurt, or some child gets hurt, or we, we see, you know, serious actions from this. I thank you for your actions on this, and, and I look forward to seeing you guys.
Comments? Any other public appearance? Seeing and hearing none, we're gonna move on to public hearing. Public hearing, number one, public hearing notice to consider a request by Michael West for the approval of tentative tract map number two, zero, four, seven, eight, located in the C R R Commercial Residential Resort Zone located at four, twenty-nine North K Street, A P N zero, one, eight, five, dash, zero, five, eight, dash, one, five, dash, zero, 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 and, um, zero, one, eight, five, dash, zero, six, seven, dash, one, five, dash, zero, 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 and zero, six, six, zero, dash, three, zero, seven, dash, one, three, dash, zero, 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 and zero, one, eight, five, dash, zero, six, seven, dash, two, zero, dash, zero, 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 and zero, one, eight, five, dash, one, zero, nine, dash, four, eight, dash, zero, 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 and zero, one, eight, six, dash, zero, two, one, dash, zero, one, dash, zero, 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 zero. All right, staff report.
Yes, honorable mayor and vice mayor and members of the council in front of you, we have the first track map the city has seen quite some times. So again, this is tentative track map number two, zero, four, seven, eight, January fourth, twenty-three. So as previously stated, I'm not gonna read all that as the vice mayor putting it up, but basically it's a sixty lot tentative track map, fifty-eight single family town homes with two parcels that are gonna be used for from intention based. So the location, as you can see on the map in front of you, it's North Key Street corner of North King Street, Needles Highway. So as you go over to the bridge in Arizona, it's all that parcel on the right side as a left side of, of Needles Highway when you get to North Key Street. So it's the northeast corner and the southeast corner of North Key Street. Here's a vicinity map. You can see within the area that to the north, there's some commercial projects to the south or residential projects. To the west, you're gonna see Needles Highway, which is a plethora of commercial building to the left, and then to the right, there's the C R R, which is north of the Needles Marina, you're gonna see what I've all pretty sprinkled in there. So it's a very busy area, but it's a very area that's ready for development in the city. So here's the aerial map. As you can see, River Road, everything within the yellow is gonna be where this parcel map explains, and we'll zoom in on it in a second. But basically, just to give you an idea that the sixty lots are gonna be found within these two areas. So some background, the application that's submitted for the tentative track map, that's this document that you have within your, within your folder. So tentative track map two, zero, four, seven, eight, approximately fourteen acres, be dividing into sixty lots. So the tentative map, tentative trap map process is used to subdivide parcels, usually five or more parcels. So final track map will be presented to the planning commission and city council. Once the conditions of approval that are found within the resolution are added onto the map. And so at this point in time, we have a tentative trap map that the applicant will go into what he's gonna do next. But basically, this is the first step to finalize a trap map. So every, every track map goes through this process. It's similar to the parcel map process. We have a tentative parcel map and a final parcel map, but this is the first tentative track map we've done in quite some time. So the purpose of this sort of tentative track map is for the development of a town home commercial project that includes RVs, and we'll show you some of those images later, but the focus is taking the dirt, the fourteen acres, and subdividing the dirt in the sixty lots. That's what you have in front of you today, and that's the decision that you're making, that you have in front of you. So the purpose of this project is, is to construct some, some structures that are fifteen to thirty-five feet tall, which is contemporary architecture. But again, that's part of the project, and we're here to talk about the dirt, but it's important to know where you're heading forward. No one know where you're heading before you know anything. There's a vegetation, a desert skate vegetation will be part of the project. The project will come back for planning approval as a planning development and for the council later as the project progresses. So applicant has subdivided an application for this track map. Again, the purpose is for the, the RV park, and again, for fifteen and thirty-five feet. Okay, so the site plan, this is it in a nutshell. We're gonna zoom in, okay, but this is just an overall sixty lot overview of the entire map. You can see the north part is above what we know as River Road or Needles Highway. That's good. We're gonna call that the northern lots, and then everything below River Road is gonna be the southern lots. And so it's numerous parcels that are being put together for a trap map for future development in our city. So you can see that the twenty-five lots are gonna be found in the northern section, which includes commercial. It's a mix of commercial with residential. So that's the, in, in the future of this project, you're gonna see commercial being added so that you can attract commercial development in the city. And then from the southern thirty-five lots, you're gonna see that there's residential portions. Those, those are all lots with RV pull-throughs. There, that's why they're designed the way they are, is so that the RV can be pulled through. But you can see that the thirty-five lots are gonna be on the southern section. So the project land division is consistent with the general plan. So currently, today, it's three different zonings. It's the C R R, it's the C two general commercial, and it's R three multifamily residential for the fourteen acres of land. That is appropriate for the subdivision of those parcels. In the future, when this project comes forward, that will, there are another designation will need to be identified, and that's a planning development to subdivide these parcels and utilize the different zonings. But again, that's gonna come at a litter date, and it's also proposed in the city's general plan designation. So the SEQA document, this big document that you receive outlines the track map, and it also outlines the scope of work for the project. So, but again, today, we're here to talk about subdivision of the dirt. Okay. So the site's physically suitable for this type of development. So all the proposed parcels meet the minimum lot area frontage or width requirements of the city code. So we are able to subdivide this appropriately for the sixty parcels. Does the design subdivision of proposed improvement will not cause substantial environmental damage? So according to the ISM M D, the document right here, will not have significant effects on the environment and includes mitigation measures that need to be, that will reduce the impacts of these mitigation measures of the applicant or proposed or operating restrictions that have been incorporated in the project so that the conditions of approval are implemented into the track map. So through adherence of these mitigations, there are no environmental impact, substantial environmental damage that will be created from this track map. So design subdivision improvements will not cause serious health problems. So the project is located in the developed area of the city. The project is also featured at adequate emergency access. There no hazard to human health will come to the construction or landscaping purposes will be impacted. So it's important, we add this slide to talk about the public review process. So on November ninth, twenty twenty-two, the city published an NOI in the paper to adopt an ISM M D. So we are required by law to put it out to the public to have folks, the public review, and also any agencies that want to comment back. That ended summer night. The city also submitted to the clearinghouse, which is a requirement of the state. So we put it on the state website, and that goes out to all the different agencies that are involved. So not only to go locally, but it goes to all the agencies that are involved. The city did receive a comment letter from the California Department of Toxic Substances. A response is found within the comments, which reduced the significant impacts that were outlined by the Department of Toxic Substances Control and therefore had been removed, and by otherwise part, the text has been added to add the significant mitigation measures that are in your condition number seventeen. So a modern, a mitigated monitoring program, which is part of the conditions of approval for the track map, has been added to ensure that the mitigation measures, the project will take place, and there's no environmental impact moving forward. Also, in order to, in pursuit of eighty fifty-two, cities were required to complete tribal consultation process with the tribe. The consultation consisted of sending out letters that are each tribe, and the city did not receive any letters for the project. So there's some added conditions that you're gonna see. So prior to issuance of grading permit, the soil mitigation plan be prepared prior to the grading activities, city, the project applicant shall submit documentation to the city engineer that any of the arsenic impacted soils that have been excavated and by a licensed group and meet the, will spill that all the remaining soil is below the, the environments prior to demolition made structures, the city stockpile samples should be taken in the immediate city of the structure and the foundation tested to ensure that there is no contamination concentrations that are above the U S N P A regional screening levels. And again, these are all conditions that have been added to the resolution that have been approved by the planning commission on January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval, recommending this project, the track map to the council. And so, but a condition number twenty-five was revised that during the summer, construction hours be flexible to the city manager approval. And so if you look at condition number twenty-five, it's think that hours of construction shall be eight to six, and then on the weekends shall be eight to six as well. And so obviously, as we know, during the summer, it can get relatively hot, so the applicant is brought forward to us that it be flexible and a plumb proof, flexible and a prob on approval, the city manager, that they be able to work, be flexible with their hours. So our recommended action is to approve resolution number twenty twenty-three dash ten, approving the sixty lot tentative track map number two, zero, four, seven, eight, four, fifty-eight, single family town homes, recreation, beautiful paths, non-accessory parcels, numbers. And yes, I'm gonna go through them, so if you don't have to, so you can just refer to what I said. So zero, six, six, zero, three, zero, one, one, three, zero, 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 one, eight, five, zero, five, eight, one, five, zero, 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 one, eight, five, zero, six, seven, one, five, zero, 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 one, eight, five, zero, six, seven, two, zero, 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 one, eight, six, zero, two, one, zero, one, zero, 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 one, eight, five, one, zero, nine, four, eight, zero, zero, two, zero. That's the second time I've done that. And also the adoption of the mitigation negative declaration, mitigation monitoring program. With that, I stand for any comments that you might have or questions. The applicant is also in the audience, and he's prepared to give his presentation as well on the project. But just to give you a rendering of what the trap back is supposed to look like, this is that southern portion, that southern parcel that we talked about. This is what it's the intention of a project. Again, this is just a visual. The project will come back. This is just an idea of what the rendering of the track map will look like if we got southern hurt. Can I now stand for any questions that you might have?
Um, Mr., are cosmon for a long break?
Yes. This is a great project. I, I read through this, uh, this whole thing, uh, front and back, and it's an awesome program, uh. Project that you have going on there. The only question I have is the smoke stack, which is from the smelting. From the smelting, I was wondering if we were gonna keep that as a historical landmark.
So this is, hold on, I wanna be clear. This is time for the staff to ask questions of the staff member. So this is your time as a council to ask questions to staff. When we're done with that, then we'll open the public hearing, then we'll hear from the developer, and he may want to comment on that at that time.
That's all the question I have. Thanks.
So open it up for the applicant?
No.
Don't sit down.
We'll call you back up.
Hello. Mayor, vice mayor, city council, city manager, which Rick is not here. Patrick is here, assistant city manager, Patrick, city attorney. Hello, and thank you. I'm here today to request approval of track map two, zero, four, seven, eight. I would like to formally thank Rick Daniels, Patrick Martinez, planning commission, and a special thank you to Linda Beard for all of her hard work and perseverance, perseverance, sorry, helping make this project happen. Thank you, Barbara. So, um. This project is, uh. Is a one of a kind. We decided to. I'm sorry?
If you stand a little farther back.
Okay.
Yeah.
We, we decided to, um. To design it for the river. Everyone has a boat. People have razors. People have big mortarhomes, the snowbirds. So we wanted to make sure, to make it easy for them to have ingress and egress, and we designed the garages for pull-throughs. Eighty percent of our lots are for pull-through RV garages for boats, razors, and whatnot. And I don't ever recall seeing another development like this. Doesn't have them, Bullhead doesn't have it, like Havasu doesn't have it, and I haven't seen one in California that has it. So instead of doing a bunch of apartments, four hundred apartments that can actually go on the property, we wanted to do something unique, because Needles is unique. You have the golf course, you have the river, and we wanted to bring some luxury to Needles. You know, for thirty-five years, Bullhead and Lake Havasu's been taking all the money, right, right from Needles. So now it's time for us to come in and, and get some of that back and, and give us, give Needles a very good, beautiful development, and that's what we have here.
Questions for the applicant from council?
I have, I have, I have a question. Do you have any past experience with housing developments or creating developments, or is this like a very new thing to do, or?
My grandfather was a builder from Oklahoma. He actually stopped in California right after World War Two and moved out here to California. My father has been in the construction business for forty years, building schools, about thirty schools a year, thousands of buildings. My brother, Michael, my partner, he is a contractor as well, builds commercial buildings, assisted living. Most of my family did commercial. We've done quite a few custom homes on the side. It's kind of hard dealing with homeowners. So, but yes, we have lots of hundreds of years of experience of building. Yes. If you say put water in it, I'm gonna put water in it. I wanna put water in it. I'm ready. If you say put water, I'm there. So, yes, hopefully with all this rain, it'll, it'll change. Everyone that I've showed the development, the billboard, you know, everything that we've packaged together, it's not, not one negative. And that's why we designed it this way, you know, for the city, for people to go, wow, look at this. And Needles has it, and no one else is gonna have it. So I'm really excited, and I think it's time to do it.
Yes, same question I had that I asked prematurely. The smoke stack, which was from the old smelting mine, are we gonna keep that up, or is that, or is that gonna be taken out?
I don't think that is a smoke stack there.
Because it's that possibility.
That, that's, yeah, what, I'm gonna say about fifteen years ago, there was a homeless lady living in there, and I had to have the sheriff's escort her out of there.
Right.
And I filled it with sand. I was, I was cleaning off, I was grubbing the, the property, and there was no sign of any smoke or any, any kind of.
Yeah.
It might have been an ice house back then in nineteen hundreds.
Okay.
You know, it's, it's hard to tell, but there was no.
Got, got.
Evidence of that.
Gotcha. Great project.
Thank you.
So about how much do you expect each one of these units to go for?
My attorney said I'm not allowed to discuss that. It has to go through the D R E, the Department of Real Estate, and C C and Rs and whatnot, but as soon as they allow me to, it'll go up on the digital billboard.
Well, you mentioned luxury, so.
Yes, the way we have it designed with the swimming pool between the she cave slash man cave and the main residence is, it's unique, and with the pull-through RV garage. And, you know, if, if you look online and you look at houses for sale in like Lake Havasu or whatnot, and they have RV garages, they're packed. They have a boat, an RV, and there's, and then you have ice chest and life vest on the, on the floor. There's not enough room. But we designed this so you can actually have enough room and put your toys and, and have that lifestyle and, and be off the ground and be clean. So it's, it's a unique design. Every home will have its own pool. Originally, we wanted to do a community pool, but with COVID and, and whatnot, and, and I think it's, it's better for people to have their own pools and, you know, kind of have their privacy. So it's, it's, we're going for that luxury is what we're going for.
Um, one, I want to thank you for your resilience, because I know you guys have gone through a lot to try to get this out there. And, I mean. Um, one, I want to thank you for your resilience, because I know you guys have gone through a lot to try to get this out there. And, I mean, we appreciate that. This is one of our, this is exactly what we're wanting is housing for us community. So, I mean, thank you for coming before us. And with that, I'm going to move to approve, so.
So we have to. We have to open a public hearing and then close the public hearing, and then you've got a motion on the floor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we are now opening it up for a public hearing, and I'm going to switch seats because my chair.
Barbara Beard, two thirteen Safari, Madam Vice Chair and members of the City Council. You know, I'm a planning commissioner, and we voted unanimously. So you already know that I approved it, but, um. I just wanted to put a few words in to say how, how absolutely gorgeous this is. And, uh, I've been working a little bit to try and help out the applicant a little bit behind the scenes. And I don't plan on stopping to do that, okay? Whatever it takes. It's my understanding that, uh, we haven't had any new development either in thirty-two years or thirty-five years. And it depends on who you're speaking to. When my research came up, it said thirty-five, but I was corrected by former councilman Terrell. I'll take his word for it. Um, I am just thrilled to have this project here and to be working with these men also and women. Uh, they are wonderful people. They're just totally blessed, and I've just been thrilled to death, and I'll put in whatever time I have to to help out getting this thing through. So I hope you approve. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Pastor Jones.
Pastor Jones, Jim Jones, uh, one seventy bubble plays second time tonight. What, I didn't, uh, realize this was going to be up tonight. Uh, it's a beautiful project, and it's, uh, you know, thank God, something's happening. But something kind of tickled my ears, and it's something near and dear to my heart because where I live, which is, uh, out on the outskirts of our community. Uh, I heard mention of boat garage, and I heard that's wonderful. And then I heard mention of. Space for off-road vehicles, razors, and the scourge of my world. Um, I know we have, uh. On the docket, uh, a, a condition to allow these off-road vehicles on our streets. From point to point, from what I understand. My biggest fear with this development is, uh, this bringing, these are going to be affluent people, uh, with affluent toys. And I will cheer them on in the use of these toys. But I want to make sure, or I want to comment that we don't allow these people with these toys to overrun our streets and things, and let them think. That we are Scottsdale or Sun City or any of that. And, uh, I appreciate, um. This, but I'm concerned about it. I no longer use the river. Because the river is full of what I call mosquitoes, and those are called jet skis. And I would hate to see that our city streets and our, and our, and our community becomes mosquito with four wheels infested. Because I would be very unhappy, and I'm sure a lot of our residents and a lot of our citizens would be. But I would welcome this, and I, and I cheer them on, but with a caveat of caution. Uh, we are not Scottsdale, we are not Sun City. And, uh, even with the passing of this new, new thing, whatever it is, it's point to point. Not up and down Broadway, not up and down our neighborhoods. Um, so, uh, I would like to see that addressed in some form or fashion. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Patrick?
Yeah, Madam Chair, real quick, uh, that's an important point. So no, uh, AB two one five two did go into law. But currently, it still needs to go to a committee. So at this point in time, there are no. Off-highway motor vehicles allowed to be driving in the streets as of today. And so if you do see them, please call the sheriff's office. They're important, but at this point in time, so it's. You cannot drive your off-highway motor vehicle without, uh, we're in the process of moving that forward. We've reached out to the Department of Transportation because we have to get their blessing and, and also the blessing of the sheriff's department. So we've worked closely with Captain Terango to ensure that. The members of this community understand that at this point in time, it is law. But the law states that a pilot program needs to be developed and a, and a, and a plan needs to be developed. So we're working on it. I'm working on it diligently, and we've sent letters out to the state, and so we're just waiting your back. So, but at this point in time, um, there will be. Pull-up committee and discussion about which streets get designated, and there's a whole bunch of different rules. Terms of bypass, uh, parcels, and there's just a whole bunch of different regulations that we have to look at before we even go down that route, so.
And just a reminder that the item before you is a tentative track map, and so. There may be people that want to get up and talk about RVs and whatnot, but that's really not the issue tonight. The issue is approval of the tentative track.
My name's Teresa Bernard. I live at three twenty-five North K Street, right behind where all this is going. Or proposed to be built. There is an access area. I have a back gate, front gate with an RV pullout. Yes, that's amazing. To have that. It's easy to get out of, go down the alley, out to the road, and it looks like. That's all going to be stopped. It looks like all those homes are going to be right, right? To where you can't get out of there. The people that live on K Street. On the riverside of the K Street, not the opposite side. It's not going to affect them at all, I don't think. And I'm sure that the property taxes in that area are going to rise. They're gonna, it, we're gonna. See all that. Your water, your electricity, your units are all gonna. Have additional monies. That easement there, that Santa Fe easement that I think it's like twenty-five feet, but I'm not certain. What it is, but there is an easement behind our home. Uh, so I'm just wondering if that's going to be cut off, if there's going to be sidewalks and gutters, and all this is, I know futuristic. Uh, as right at this point in time, are there going to be curbs and gutters and the egress and, uh. Ingress and egress, you know, where is that going to fall? Also, uh. Of course, it's going to add additional fire and. And sheriff's departments, and I guess that'll all be taken care of as well. The, uh, and I know as they develop that property. That, uh, they're going to raise a lot of dust, and I understand from reading the amendments that it's going to be like. Two times a day, they will be watering that area. Okay, two times a day, but you know, that's very dusty back there. It has not been disturbed in years. Years, I'm sure, because I've been there thirty-some odd years, although I've been out working and I did get COVID. I have lung problems. It's difficult to breathe. That dust. It's the accumulation of that is just not going to be good for anybody who is out there that has a problem from COVID. You know, I worked for the planning department, planning commission, San Bernardino County Environmental Improvement Agency. Back in the day when it was the Environmental Improvement Agency, and anytime there were any mitigation, whether it be environmental. Or, uh, animals, any of that, that was all taken into consideration. An environmental impact report was done. So I'm just wondering, when you say planning commission, you mean the planning commission for the city? Or do you mean the planning commission for the county? The city. So, see, that's where I'm. The, the dust control is one thing. That's three minutes.
Sorry, I just have another few comments.
Anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Tim Carroll, thirteen thirty-five Lily Hill Drive. Uh, when I first saw this project come before council. Quite some time ago, I was very excited to see new housings of any kind come into needles. Obviously, a few people have concerns about dust and stuff, but that's easily mitigated if it is approved, you know, water does wonders to keep dust down. But yeah, I'm very excited to see this kind of thing because my plan in years to come is to have an RV and maybe be able to stay in a place like this. In needles and a few other places where my grandkids are. So, but I, I hope the council approves this and we move forward with it because we desperately need housing of. Any type, and this is actually a big boost for the city. So thank you very much.
Thank you, too.
For public comment for have the applicant come back up? Okay, come on, back up. Oh, you're gonna, oh, come on up.
Don't be shy.
Okay, um, as far as the dust control, yes, it will be water, 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 watered. We have to have that for our compaction. And, uh, if there is any dust, there, we'll put a phone number on the fence. We'll have a website. If there's any dust, you can call and we'll. Address it, but there will be, we'll control the dust. Um, as far as an easement goes, there is no easement. There has never been an easement on that property. My family has owned it for twenty-five years. Um, there are properties on North K Street that they had an option to buy an easement. From the railroad back almost a hundred years ago. So I think that's where people get confused when they say easement. Now, there are cars that do drive across my property trespassing and dumping couches and batteries and stuff, which I. You know, I can't stop them. So there is no easing. There has never been an easement. There never will be an easement. There is no easement. It's trespassing if you're, if you're going on someone's private property.
Your comments to the council, please.
Okay, there, there's no easement, legal easement.
Thank you.
No more public comment. Um, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for deliberation. We do have a motion on the floor. What I, do we have a second? Okay, Councilmember Campbell seconds it. Do we call for a vote?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yeah.
McCorco?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Long break.
Yes.
All right. Public. Get to work. All right, public comments pertaining to the council. I'm sorry, flipped my page, no. Consent calendar. Uh, public comments pertaining to the council items, a three-minute time limit per person has been established. All right, being and hearing done, um, consent calendar. Oh, are you coming up for a comment? Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you very much for your comments. The consent calendar, all matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion on the form listed. The mayor or any member of the city council may pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Prior to council action, a member of the public may address the city council on matters scheduled on the consent calendar. A three-minute time limit per person applies. Recommended action, approve items two through eight on the consent calendar by affirmative roll call vote. Any discussion, any motions that you're pulling?
Move to approve. Somebody needs to.
You have a motion to approve?
And Councilmember Campbell's already stated that she's recusing herself on item number five.
We have them.
We have approved.
We have it approved. Are you seconding it?
Oh.
Okay, all right, call for a vote.
Campbell, yes.
McCorco?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes. Yes.
Long break.
Yes.
Regular items, resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero eight, amending resolution twenty twenty-one dash six eight. Approving an updated economic development program funded by ten percent of the tax revenues received from cannabis businesses.
Yes, honorable mayor, members of the council, in front of you, we have a resolution. So we met, uh, January tenth, twenty twenty-three to go over direction of what you, how you wanted the city staff to read. We recommend changes to this program. So the changes that we have in front of you today are based on the discussions that we had had. So you cannot use to pay existing debts or purchased land. The loans must be dispersed quarterly after the approved, approved by city council. And then a business plan be provided. So the business overview and history applicant to provide resumes of business owners. And business owner view of the history, provide information, any certifications or licenses that they might have. Business or personal credit history. So the business owner will need to have a solid business credit history. Time in business, required business or work experience, and then business finances, you want to. Um, the applicants to show that they have annual revenue and cash flow projections. So the business financial statements, uh, to be provided to the city. So again, this is based off the discussion that we had at the last city council meeting. You gave us direction, and it's basically part of the resolution. Our recommend act, recommended action is to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero eight with these changes.
Any council members have, uh, questions for the staff?
I do. I have some, uh, questions or comments on a couple of them. Uh, the second solid bullet point, loans are to be dispersed quarterly after approval of city council. Is that within a year's time, two years' time, ten years' time?
So say, for instance, somebody receive, oh, sorry.
Oh, all right.
So say, for instance, the last, uh, so it'd be quarterly, and we would break it down. So depending on the money that they, they got, we would break it down. We do a, um, we do a, a document that shows the breakdown of payments. And so say if they receive twelve thousand, we break it up into, you know, quarters, something like that, whatever is deemed. Right by the council, we can move forward with doing that. And so that way. I mean, the intent is so that if, uh, if the company gets a grant, say twelve thousand dollars upfront. Um, and they do go, they do go out of business, that they wouldn't have the full fund from the city.
Right.
In their banking account.
I, yeah, I, I understand that, but I was just wondering, is that an open-ended? We're going to fund it over the course of one year, two years, three years, four years, or?
Right now, it's quarterly, but we would break it down into quarters. So for, it, it is open-ended. So if you said it, you want to say. At this point in time, we would just set a, a quarterly, um. Armatization table. How to pay it out. And so we would set that up.
So obviously, the larger the advance, you might extend your funding out twelve quarters. For three years as opposed to a smaller one.
Right. And, and might I add, I'm sorry, last time, um, the, uh. The way that the grant works is if I'm a business owner. I go invest twenty-four thousand dollars, I get paid back the twelve thousand, the half. Um, if they, uh, don't, if they are worried about prevailing wage, it's two percent of that, but initially using. Sweet shop is an example. They spent twenty-four thousand dollars upfront. And upfront, they were, so they came to council, gave us all the receipts, and then we issued them twelve thousand dollars. So what would be different this time around is that the upfront expenditure still occurs, but we would break, we would disperse them out quarterly.
Yeah, instead of three thousand, okay. Okay, may I continue because I had multiple questions. Okay, um. The third hollow bullet point, the time in business, uh, require business owners or equivalent work experience. Is there a minimum length of time, five years, ten years, six months?
At this point in time, there is not. If the council would like to see a minimum time requirement, we could put that in there. But basically, if somebody has a tire shop, and they want to go into the restaurant business. They might not have a background in restaurant business, but they are business folks. So it'd be, it'd be based on the council's discretion of how they would want to move that forward. So it'd be in the application that they would write this information out, you'd read it, and then you'd invalidate it. Based on the experience that they have. So that, um, some people might not have any experience. But, you know, might have some sort of, uh, other work experience, but that's going to be based on the council's direction.
It, it's just concerning, as John had mentioned at the last meeting with, and having a banking experience background that. Um, discrimination, unintentional discrimination could happen by treating one applicant different than another applicant. And the more specific your criteria are, the less likely that that could happen. And so if we wanted to say at a minimum of three years, for example, that's why I was asking, it could only protect us in the future.
Small business administration requirements for them, I believe it's two years.
Okay.
And so wanted to near, um, their requirements, it'd be a two-year, fire bit, two years of business experience or equivalent work experience.
In that field. So you're starting to say that you can't start this unless you have two years' experience in a business? Why would we, what? That's not fair. Like, that's, I mean, yeah, if I want to start Tana's car shop and I don't have any experience, that's my, my money I lose. I just gotta, if I don't, if I don't stay open, I don't get the other payments, right?
It's written out. It'll be, it's written out. That's correct.
Yeah. I'm not, we don't want to, we don't want to stop businesses from trying to open up business. I mean.
I have one. Um, it would be the fourth, um, bullet point down. Um, I'm not sure if I'm not understanding it, but if I am, I don't agree with this one. Um, for individual home builders to be eligible to apply for an incentive or grant, the construction of a new home must be within the city limits. And be a permanent residence, it's on page two, and must live in the home for five years. So we are allowing them to use it for a residence that they're going to live in and not a business?
Did that, that change?
Does that?
We have incentive for homes. We voted on incentives for not just businesses, but for, for home, for builders, for builders.
This, this is your opportunity, all of you, to provide input back to staff and what you like, what you don't like, what you want to say, so.
I, I wanted to, can I make a comment? I, I've always kind of felt that way about the, it's, I agree that we do want more homeowners, but I do think it's kind of a vague. Um, I've always felt like it's, I don't know, it gets a little muddy because we, what the plan is, is for the economic development. I know it is bringing people in, but I was kind of, I always kind of second guessed that one myself. I do like what Joanne's saying about parameters for different things, but then I a hundred percent agree with Tana, too. We, you know, we do want to bring in new business. We just don't want to be in like a same position again, like we were with, just recently with another business closing. So if there's a way we can kind of follow some sort of guideline, maybe not just to up, yeah, up to a certain amount, maybe keeping it a little vague, I'm not sure. Go ahead.
Um, on that, that, that's the reason we did, that's the reason we talked about this and we put it out this way is that it's, it's not before we were giving it to them all at once. They got all the money. And then if they went out of business, then, then, then that money went with them. This way, they're not getting all the money. They have to do all of this first. And then they're only getting it quarterly. And that means in four payments. That doesn't mean quarterly in one year. It means in four payments, how we set forth whatever the amount is. So that is our protection, is that we're not getting tomorrow. So that is our, that's good protection. That's why, that's why we decided to do it.
Any more questions?
So that being the case, um, if we're adverse to the, having a minimum length of work experience, and we are mitigating ourselves by splitting it up in quarters, might we just want to eliminate time in business required? If that's.
I mean, I'm, I like the, having a business proposal, even if it's a poorly written one, it shows
Oh, exactly, yeah.
You know, uh, I, I think every, it just shows effort on their part. So I like that one, but, um, be attached to the application. I don't think we need to put a whole bunch on there.
I wanted to speak to the question that Jamie brought up, but individual home builders to be eligible for incentive grant. New home must be within the city limits, be the permanent residence must get that over five years after we see this. That goes along the lines of what we did with the Facebook, that home education program, where we, we offered a grant of twelve thousand dollars. Want to do a great, it is qualified. And the parameters on that was you have to own your home, you have to live it in five years, and at that point, it becomes a grant and not a loan. Um, if you sell your home, out of it, have to pay that money back. So this right here is, is incentive for people to come here and build. And this is an incentive or grant for them to build in our city limits.
But then there's one right underneath it for home builder developers, too.
No, and that's for someone building many houses or temporary buildings. Um, and they have to build two of them, or build for developers, for home building developers, which is not the homeowner, home builder, which are two different genres of people.
When Patrick, what's the difference in the amount of money for the, the two separate? Is there only for their, um, fees?
There is no, um, there is no difference. The, the, the way the structure of the program is, it's fifty percent of what you put in, you get fifty percent back. There's a caveat. The state of California requires that you spend more than two percent towards a project. It requires them, it's a, it's a, it's a minimum, the minimum. And so basically what that states is that if you spend more than two percent, that it, funds are received by, let's use the Hampton, for instance. The Hampton, they came in and said, we have a twelve million dollar project. So the, the city granted them like one point seven five percent. Because it didn't put them over the threshold to develop the entire project as prevailing wage. The prevailing wage threshold is, is between the contractor and the workers, the, 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 uh, the labor, labor, um, Department of Labor. So it's not a city, we're not evolving that. That's their responsibility to ensure that they're paying their individuals prevailing wage. And it's part of the, actually, as, as part of the application, it's stated in there that they be familiar with the prevailing wage loss. But basically, to answer your question, there is, it's fifty percent of what they put in, what they're eligible for.
What they're eligible for. For the grant.
Any other questions before I open it for public comment? Any other? All right, I'm going to open it up for public comment. I think Barbara was up. Go, come on up.
Barbara Beard, two thirteen Safari. Madam Vice Chair and Members of City Council. Um, I have notes. I'm going to try and whip through them really fast in three minutes. I was not aware that we had ever added any housing to this economic development program. As I mentioned before, this was a writ, last city council meeting. This was for economic development, as Council, Councilwoman Belt mentioned. It was to bring in more business in case the cannabis industry fails. And so that we have more businesses making money to bring us money. It didn't have anything to do with home building, okay? Now, in here, it starts out with, will be used to attract new or expanded non-cannabis. I don't know what that meant. And I'm going to pass over that because that's not the essential comments I have. And then diversified business, providing essential goods and services to the community. That was the intent of the act to begin with, or the resolution. And then the city council accepts the recommendation to the subcommittee to create the proposed economic development program. We already did that when we first enacted this. So all this language is being worded as though we've never had this act before, this rule, um, or program. Um, all of section two, the city council here does hereby establish an economic development program to be funded with ten percent of tax revenues received from cannabis businesses. It already does. We already have that. So I don't know why that is restated either. It should have been stated as though you are revising it or some language to that effect. If it's already been revised to adequate houses, then this is the second revision. I'm not sure why it was worded that way. Um, we do have at the bottom of page one, and I'm looking at the resolution now, not my comments on the staff report. And I believe that's what Councilwoman McCorkle was referring to also, the resolution. Down bottom page one, I just provide information on business certi- certificates or licenses held by the applicant, if applicable. Having prior business experience, uh, me practicing law, you might want to see my license to practice law. But, um, I'm not going to open a law office and say I'm an attorney if I'm not an attorney. So some places the license may be applicable, and some place, maybe I want to go out and bear it, be a paralegal, assuming that was legal in the state of California without an attorney supervising me. Um, you, it may not matter if I have a license or not. You're going to trust what I tell you or not. And if I lose, I lose. Um, it's like that million-dollar investor program on TV. I don't have TV. So, um, as, uh, the city attorney mentioned at the last meeting, page two, at the top, business or personal credit history, business owner will need to have a solid business credit history. So what does that mean? Okay, what would you call solid? It's subjective, in my opinion. Uh, time in business, again, it was what Councilmember Belt mentioned, how much time do you have to have, do you have to have experience to start a new business? Most people, a lot of people don't, okay? And maybe in a city like this, a lot of people don't, or we should let anybody in that wants to give it a shot. And then paying, paying in quarterly payments, just a limited amount, takes care of whether they make it or not. Permission to continue? Yes, you are. Well, okay, so most of my comments, I haven't even gotten to yet, and you're not going to let me speak any further. Thank you.
Can she come up a second time?
She can.
Up again?
It's okay.
Okay, she can come up a second time. That's fine.
Good evening, uh.
After Sean goes.
Vice Mayor.
No, no, second time.
Time. Person is the council rules.
I'll start my clock again, yeah.
Okay. I apologize. I'm new at this. I apologize.
Good evening, Your Honor, Vice Mayor, Council. Um, let's talk about economic development. Uh, you had Mr. Bracken here last weekend, or last meeting. Economic development is tied together, and housing's part of that. So that's why we added the housing portion of this program. What brings jobs, what brings people, added population to the community, housing. It's not like you're reimbursing them fifty percent of whatever that's costing them to build their new residence or a second residence. It's the two percent threshold. If not, who can afford to build a house paying a labor at fifty-two dollars an hour prevailing wage for labor? That's, so get that out of the picture. It's not something that, you know, you're going to be reimbursing an individual home builder, or a, or somebody building three houses, you know, five hundred thousand dollars to give them half their money back. It's not. Last, I calculated with Mr. Martinez, because I had a developer in front of us for townhomes. It was about fourteen thousand dollars per lot. That's just kind of reimbursing the city's fees and time and what they can do without triggering that prevailing wage. And now we'll get into about business experience. Most people that start a new business walk away from something prior, they were dealing with no business experience necessary. They're putting all their eggs in a basket, and this is their, this is America, this is their dream to start a new business, not to be withheld by, well, I don't have no experience in it. So I mean, that's like me, I couldn't go become a nurse like Mrs. Belt, because of course you need schooling for that. But if you wanted, if I wanted to come be a newspaper editor or whatever, I could at least try to write blogs or something. There's a big difference in, when you say that, you know? So that's another thing you look at. So on all economic developments, about rooftops in our house. So remember that when you're thinking of this. And, you know, the, every quarter, that's now regaining the city's threshold where they're not going to be able to walk away from day one. So let's look at the overall picture. We've had, I think, five or six in the city that have applied and have been paid. We've had one that didn't turn out in the city's favor, where they closed prematurely because of unforeseen reasons or whatever. So let's not rewrite their will. It was invented by some of you councilors up there. Was it seven, uh, Ms. Belt was, it was invented because let's use the cannabis money we have to attract non-cannabis business. Point in general, I mean, it was pretty, looked like it was written on a barroom napkin to me when it first came forth, but now it's been revised, but let's not reinvent the wheel. Let's put it to use for what was introduced as getting business or now housing developers or Ms. Belt wants to build a new house and ran onto the other one, she's able to apply for it. That's what it was for. Thank you.
Tim Terrell, thirteen thirty-five Lily Hill Drive. Um, I agree with most of this as far as it's written, except for a few points. For an individual to come in here and use it to build their personal home, uh, that's what banks are for. That's not what city council and economic development funds are for. And, I mean, we've brought up Ambie Sweet Shop several times, saying, oh, this happened, this happened. They put up twenty-four thousand dollars of their own money. That's gone. We've had one failure out of several. That's what happens in business. It's not, everybody's rolling the dice. We roll the dice on cannabis, we won. We rolled the dice on a few other things, we don't win. If you put all this criteria into place, you would have still given Ambie Sweet Shop the money. The difference is you might have done it in four payments over the course of one year. Or you could even put a restriction on here that says, yes, we've given you this money. If you're out of business in one year, two years, six months, whatever you want to put on there, then they owe the money back. It's no longer a grant, it's a loan. And that would even be reasonable. Clayton, Hazelwood, myself, Tana, John, we put this together originally. And it was put together to where we weren't putting all our ba- all our eggs in one basket just on cannabis to where that was the only business in town. So we set this aside to get a flower shop, to get a tire shop, to get a grocery store, to get a Hampton, to get whatever. I mean, it says, uh, you want solid business history credit or whatever. I own a business in town, so probably everybody would go, oh, yeah, he's a good safe bet. But what if I decided to keep this business running and I want to open a flower shop now? I have zero experience in flowers. You're going to tell me no? Even if it might be my dream. And I wanted to put up, you know, twice as much money as the city to make it happen. So you can't just base it on what you think they're going to do or what they've done before. Some of the biggest, uh, businessmen in this ci- in this country started out with two pennies to rub together. You know, electricity, things like that. And then the other thing is, um, it says here, the incentive will be paid when the entire project is completed and, and certificates of occupancy issued. Now, that's fine for the guy who comes into town and wants to build two houses. But what if River Lux decides they want to do, are you going to hold up every penny until all sixty-seven houses are put together? Or are you going to say this much and then complete this much and then complete, and then disperse it that way? Or are you going to wait till that very last place is built and he's put up several million dollars? And then you're going to hand him pennies. Thank you very much.
We do have a, an ordinance that sets the time limit at three minutes per person. I know in the past, it's been, you know, sometimes uh, treated a little bit lax, but tonight, we did have a public hearing and we did cut somebody off at three minutes, and so we need to be consistent.
All right, thank you. Okay, any?
But I, I would invite Ms. Beard to share her comments with me. I think she made some good points and welcome those. Which, after the.
After the, yeah. Being no more public comment, taking it back to the council, um, so, where do we?
On a motion to table this for, so.
But can we still, I mean, the problem is, though, don't we want to address what we want to fix first?
Are we, are we able to, there was a motion at table, are we able to continue?
There's no second.
There wasn't a second, but if there was a second, then there would be no further debate. You'd vote, but, but, um, giving comments to staff, I think, would be helpful and it could be revised and brought back.
I think I would like to take off that, um, you have to have experience in a business. Business or personal credit, but no, time in business requires business or equivalent work experience.
You want that removed?
Remove, yeah.
I do, too.
Yeah. Any, anything, any other comments about?
Do.
Go ahead, Jamie.
Um, I, so the only one thing, I mean, these are all good, but in replacing that, I think a business plan should be attached to the application.
But doesn't that, so, uh, that is providing business plan.
I'd like to have stay, even though that's going, but I'm, I can't say I agree with the individual home, um, builder and having to live in the personal property for five years. I don't think we should be paying for, out of this, for someone to build a home when this is for economic development for businesses, if that's not going to bring in the actual. If that's not going to bring in the actual business entity to needles, oh, that's just bringing in another house. We have grants for that, that's not, technically, that's not economic development.
I would think that the two or more houses would be acceptable and not the single family.
I think, I mean, that's a hard, I kind of completely can see Sean's point on it though because of the fact that bringing somebody in, just paying, I mean, we already know Arizona can be, I mean, there's a big huge competition right now for Arizona and California. If we can give them some incentive to take care of some of that, some of that cost that they, we can't, we can't stop because California ties our hands on some of these things that might incentivize somebody to build on this area, on this side versus the Arizona side, because now at least they can get 50% of their city fees back. Things that, some of it we have to charge because that's just part of being in California.
So, nobody wants, so adding prevailing wage adds significant cost to your project. So nobody wants to build it?
Yes.
I'm not going to speak for everybody. Majority of developers don't want to build that prevailing wage, so they won't be asking for 50%. Majority of them will be asking for the 2%, because that doesn't put them over the prevailing wage. Now, those, that 2% is minimal in terms of the total cost of paying for a house. And you're taking, those are permit fees. So as it was pointed out, they must already have a zoning permit. They must already have the house built. So they would come to you after that was built for those funds. And so they could explain to you, hey, I had this house built, this is the issue that I had. This is why I want these permits paid for because of the other side of the river, it's more expensive. So you'd already have a product already built. So that money is, aren't going to deter somebody, I mean, it might deter somebody from building a home or somebody building multiple homes, I would argue. That is the case, that if somebody was building multiple homes. The, now the one home, in terms of the permit fees, I can't speak for everybody, but everybody needs, in order, the intent was to be competitive with getting at least something back for home development. So that was the intent. But again, so to the council, on what you want to see here, it's, 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 these are set, but they're not set, so.
I, I do, like, when Sean, you know, put it all kind of into perspective, it really did help me. It's like, and Tana was saying, you know, it makes us more competitive with houses across the river. And I do think it, I do think it is fairly important. And that is what this is all about. Obviously, we've only had, of the years we've had it, nobody, has anybody ever done it for that? So I don't, like, if I change it, I guess is kind of my opinion because it's a little benefit. It'll help people want to build a house over here. I don't know, I think it, I think that's, I think that's kind of a good idea. But I, I do agree with taking out the time in business. And I do agree with what you said about the business overview. That's how I feel. Go ahead.
Patrick, it's 2%, or it'd be 1.8% of the total cost of the house, right?
So the de minimis clause.
Yes.
But if you go to the last bullet point on the resolution, the applicant shall be responsible for complying with prevailing wage laws. The, since the applicant to the project, all contractors and the agents hired shall comply with the California Labor Code. And if you scroll down to the bottom, a contribution to the city is de minimis in both less than $600,000 and less than 2% of the total project. So that would be the cap for an individual that's building a home. Because it would put them over and they'd have to pay the prevailing wage, which would drive up the cost of their project or their house by at least 27%.
So that would be $5,000 for a $250,000 home at 2%, right? So, I mean, it's $5,000.
Any other, any, any other?
And they have to live for five years here or becomes a loan. Do we put that part in there?
Yes.
Or it becomes in there?
I think that's in there already.
Yes, it is.
What was that one?
The five years residency of the house.
Or it becomes a loan, not a grant.
It becomes a loan.
Yeah, but that isn't there, otherwise it becomes a loan.
Do it. Do you have your recommendations or the, your, I would be adopting?
What the council wants, and then we'll bring it back to you at the next meeting.
Okay.
So we will add that, and then again, you take another look at it and then revise it. You don't need to do all this tonight. I mean, I want your input. We would, city staff would like your input, so we can bring you back what you want appropriate, so we can get this approvable.
What else is on there, Patrick? We'll do it tonight.
To table it? Yeah, you can second it.
Okay, I'll second it.
Yeah, so you have got a first and a second to table it, so you vote on it now, other than table.
Was there a time parameter on it? He didn't?
Shall they rewrite it?
That's not what, that was not the motion.
What is the motion?
The motion was to table it.
Until he rewrites it.
Until.
Okay.
Second.
Call for a vote.
That's number Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Yes.
So?
Yes.
Yes.
Any attorneys' reports?
I have nothing to say. I get my report on the town, so I have nothing for me.
Nice.
City managers?
Yes, so we had some great events that occurred today. One of them was the Lily Hill Booster Station.
Yes.
So the, at the beginning of 2016, the city staff, Rainy Torrance and Company, began, started looking for funding to replace our aging Lily Hill Booster Station. And so the project consists of relocation of the existing station pump, the new pumps to be upsized, and the existing piping supply discharge to be replaced. So the project was 100% funded by the State Water Resources Control Board, $2 million plus. And we're very excited about that, so we were able to have the ribbon cutting today. And that was very exciting for us. In addition, we're proud to announce that the L Street Booster Station and the well number 11 treatment plant, the water replacement lines, over $16 million worth of the rubits will be completed over the next few years. So our community will continue to benefit from these projects that we have funded by grants. So that's, that was one of the events that we had. The other event that we had was opening the courthouse. It was fantastic. The sheriff's department has backpack, backpipes. So we're really excited about that, actually in-house. And so we'll be reaching out to the sheriff's department. Have that, but no, really though, the, you know, our city is being offered justice and not being discriminated against. Yeah, that's the worst, to access the justice. And so we have that back now. So it'll be a phased process. As you can recall, from 2009, almost a decade, we haven't had those kinds of services. And so we phased it. I'll start with tickets and whatnot, and I'm going to work their way in. We're really excited about that. That was very good for the community. I'm proud to announce that John and I did a tour today of the Hampton. You haven't had an opportunity to go into that Hampton lobby? It is beautiful. It is remarkable. You walk into that lobby, you're like, where am I? And it's really neat to say that that's in needles and you're reminded by the art that's on the walls because it's all Route 66 P. So you're reminded where you're at. So it's really neat, so that's great. Coming up, we're going to have two workshops regarding the general plan. It's going to go to the planning commission on February 1st and it'll be coming to council on February 14th. And then we're going to be taking it back for approval to the planning commission on the 15th and to council on the 20th. So the general plans will be coming forward. It's been a two-year process, we're very proud about this. We haven't updated our general plan since 1986. And so it's, we've had numerous community meetings. And so all this input's finally being put on the piece of papers and going to be brought forward to you all. So we go to planning first and then with the workshop, we go to council with the workshop. And then we're going to bring it back to you all for approval by the end of the month. So we're really excited about that. And that concludes my city manager's report.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Campbell?
Hi, I don't really have anything. I just wanted to say, to reiterate, the grand opening of the courthouse was really wonderful today. It was really great to meet all the judges. It was really wonderful to see the color guard and the backpipes. I mean, our color guard was absolutely phenomenal. They were just wonderful to watch and the backlogs were beautiful. But it was really, really nice. It was nice to see some of the people that were originally from our court here today. One of them is the, is the manager, the project manager, all of it, who came right here from our court. So that was really cool. So it was really, it was really a lot of fun. And I'm so excited that we are going to, I mean, it's been a long fight trying to get, you know, our people covered and have justice here. And on a personal note, it's a really good thing to make this, I'm so excited. So it was, it was nice. It was really, it's been a long time coming and it was very wonderful to see that come to fruition and to know, you know, a lot of people were involved in that. And we've been fighting for a long time for that. And it was really, really great to just be there and to realize that this really is happening. And they have, you know, steps coming, you know, start out small and go there. So folks' offices open, file paperwork, all new cases could be filed there. Nothing's going to come here for a while, but, you know, in March, they'll start seeing things here. So they'll step it up slowly from there. And there is the public defender that comes on the first Friday of every month that sits in here that helps people that need help. So for people who don't know, that Ward Wilson is there. He does do that and he's been doing it for a long time. Best kept secret, needles. And it's been, is there, first of all, every month, anyone that needs to know that. So other than that, I don't have any requests. Thank you. I want, I just want to, I do want to say my deepest condolences to our mayor for her profound loss, her husband, and also I want to make her surprise that her husband has lost two grandparents. She's hurting too, so our prayers and love to all of you. Thank you.
Councilmember McCorkle?
Um, I just have one. I've gotten a lot of people complaining to me whenever I'm out about the intersection there going over the bridge. Is there a sign or something that we can put before the light that says, don't block the intersection? Or just a kind of?
You know, so there's, there's a ton of signs up there.
I haven't seen it, but every morning, like even when I'm going to work or even when I'm coming back across there's semi, there's cars, I have pictures being sent to me of that whole intersection, so no one can make a left. Sometimes they can't go straight to get anywhere because they just keep coming through that intersection.
I think that's the case the other day because it was semi, like in the intersection.
Yeah. Two times today, I tried to go through there and there was a semi a few times.
Are you talking about K Street and, and Needles Highway?
Yeah. Also Needles, also Broadway and at the light there where it used to be Kentucky.
Oh, Broadway.
Right there, Broadway, Overpass comes into River Road, right there where the Jehovah's Witness Church is. That intersection there has a light, but there have been cars blocking. They pull, but people don't realize, you are not allowed to block an intersection. Don't pull into it if you can't clear it. And they want to make sure they get through that light. The other vehicle, and then you can't, you can't go through to make a left to go to the freeway that way. And you can't go into the village because the intersection open blocks.
Yeah.
Any other, any other comments?
I don't have anything.
Okay.
Um, two things. I know the River Fund has reached out to Rick in the past to talk about homeless domestic violence issues. And so I met with them again through the hospital. So they're, they're wanting, they technically do reach out to Needles. So I was going to try to see if we can get another set set up with them just for another option for us for some of our homeless, if they, they have many, many programs that they're working with. So I, I know Mike Connor's running it and would be very interested in meeting with us. He said he's reached out to Rick, so we're kind of, just something to keep pushing forward. And then second, Earth Day will be coming up in April. If we can do another community cleanup, we don't think we ever got that one off last year. But if we start now, maybe we can do one of those, we did, two years ago, we did the Jack Smith Park cleanup. Just everybody come out with their pickup dicks and clean up the parks and, or we pick an area to do. So it just makes it a kind of a nice community area thing and Earth Day celebration and community pickup. So if we can start, set up a date for that. We had employees come out also and help us and that was, it was tremendous. We picked up a lot of trash that day.
Nice.
So, thanks.
Uh, graffiti in the town. Uh, we're having a problem with graffiti. If anybody hasn't noticed, I've noticed it on the side of Needles Point. And when you go down Cubs, when you go down the alleyway there at Cubs, in the alley, there's graffiti all over in the alley. And I think that should be covered up. We don't want our town looking like a ghetto. And and the light, the light there that she was mentioning, I've sat there a few times and deliberately timed it. The longest I've waited is 10 minutes and the shortest I've waited was just getting right through. And media, about a medium time to get through, there's about four minutes. It's about four minutes. So if you have the time just to sit there, just go, just wait, just wait and be patient. Yeah, that's, that's all I got to say on that one. It's, it's going to, we got six months of it. It is what it is. Nothing we can do about it. And the sheriff department could make a lot of revenue if they went and gave people tickets for blocking intersection. But, but they're busy, they have things to do. They, they can't police just that one area. That's all I got.
The mayor mentioned to me, to mention at the meeting about weeds, since we have gotten some rain, weeds are starting to sprout up on the, we look at the vacant lots. And then there's a palm tree on, the palm trees by the Center for Change, I think. Those are looking like they need some attention. Also, I was hoping that for the next meeting, we could have an update from the chamber, kind of where they're at. I was down at the museum, I don't know, like two weeks ago, a week ago. And I was peeking in their windows and it looks like they got some stuff going on in there. So it'd be great to have an update to see where they're at, what their business plan is and everything. The, I, it was a great event today with the, with the court. I'm really excited, a little jealous of some of their stuff, you know, working at a court myself. Oh, this is a nice jury room. Yeah. And the groundbreaking was excellent and definitely a culmination of so many people's work, especially, I mean, especially our staff. Our staff's been amazing with all these grants and everything. I'm looking forward to next week, going to my first S B C T A meeting. I know that's really important and I'm looking forward to that. And happy Lunar New Year, everyone. Thank you. With that.